I love it. I would invite everybody, everybody in the city of Flint to come to the McCree Theater before the last performance and enjoy the show. It's so energetic.
Come join us at the new McCree Theater.
All right. Good evening, everybody, and thank you for tuning into Real Talk with Karen Weaver. I am your host and I am here. We have a very special guest this evening, Dr. Pamela Pugh, who is President of the State Board of Education. And if you're from around these parts, these neck of the woods, you recognize her also as the chief, the former Chief Public Health Officer of the city of Flint. Uh, Dr. Pugh, thank you for, for coming on this evening.
Thank you for having me.
We, we have a lot to talk about, but before we get into it, I want to just tell people to like, share and subscribe. Okay? I want to remind people to do that because we have some, really, I think some very important things to talk about. Because, I mean, I know you've been watching the news because you've had to live with some of the things going on as we all do, but you're doing it at a different capacity. You're doing it at a different capacity. You know, Pam, Dr. Pugh, I've been watching this news. And, um, you know, it's something different all the time, but education has been at the forefront lately. You know, he's been talking about education. We knew it was coming. Uh, and okay, you see, I'm still wearing my vote pen because, you know, I said this before, you get what you vote for.
This is true.
What you don't vote for.
That's true.
And so now we're living it.
Yep.
We're living it. And so we've been hearing about the dismantling of the education system, the Department of Education.
Yeah.
And, you know, so I was, I was thinking about that and I said, oh, we need to have a conversation about this because I really want people to understand what does that mean from the federal level down here to the state, the local level? How does that impact us here, you know, locally in the city of Flint? And wherever you are, uh, that's what we want to talk about. And, um, I was looking at, you know, some of the things the Department of Education is responsible for, and it's things like student loans, uh, federal funds for low income students, special education, uh, you know, programs, among many other things, uh, is, is what this department oversees. And so I think I was listening to something, I don't know if it might've been yesterday or earlier, earlier today. I mean, it's starting to run together, but they were talking about over 900 million, uh, being stopped, uh, in contracts and education. And, and talking about the impact that that was going to have as far as research on schools, when you look at school demographics and who's there and what the makeup is and, and how people are performing. And so when we used to say, oh, we're performing this way compared to others, you know, those kinds of things, uh, will be, will be stopped as far as program evaluation. And this being something that, uh, President Trump wants immediately. So I, I was saying that just to give a little background, but I'm gonna have you talk, but I'm gonna start with a little baby step first. Because, you know, we kind of saw something happen last year, uh, when, uh, what is it? My Leap came in.
Oh, oh, yes.
So I want to start there and then start with the federal because, uh, what was the, what did that do?
Well.
Tell people what that, that is first.
So Michigan by constitution elects its board members. So I am one of eight members. We're elected every two years. We serve eight years. You were there. When I was first elected, my second term, and then the State Board of Education hires and evaluates. And the, the State Superintendent of Public Instruction, who is really the conduit between U.S. Department of Education and local school boards, the State Board of Education, uh, provides recommendations and communicates with the legislature and works with the legislature along with the Michigan Department of Education to ensure that we're setting forward the best course of action, the best policy platform uh, for our children. Uh, and sometimes people don't really like that because i- in, 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 in particular, governors and it, it was unfortunate that we had, um, our governor here, the Democratic Governor, who pulled services from the Department of Education and created a new department, My Leap. Um, and so it was at a time that, and the parts of the education system that they pulled out were around early childhood. With early childhood in the country, we were performing the best in, um, our Great Start Program. We were at the top in the country, one of the top programs. And so we were doing well, but unfortunately those, uh, services were snatched and those services were put into this new, um, department. And so some of us will, will argue. Let me say this. Our children need to make sure that we have a stable system. Um, there's been a lot and we'll get into all of these issues that destabilize education. Uh, creating more bureaucracy is not what we're asking for, is not what we're, but at the same time, you know, where we're looking at a president who's looking at just sweeping the rug from under our feet, that's not what we're asking for either. And so was the setup of My Leap, um, best for our children? We were doing well, uh, in, in our early childhood, uh, programming. And so it was something that I fought against and will continue to question and will continue to monitor because I feel that I was elected and within the constitution, it's that, that is a part of our education system that I'm responsible for by, by constitution, by state constitution.
So, so that's the first thing, right? And now here comes Donald Trump, President Trump. And he's talking about, uh, you know, getting rid of, uh, the Department of Education. And so can you talk to us about, you know, I was just giving some examples of some of the things that, that the Department of Education at the federal level oversees. Uh, but I know that, uh, there's money. There's a lot of money that comes from the federal government and sometimes it's hard for us to just, to, to connect the dot of how the, at the federal level, it impacts us locally, but I know we get a lot of our, our Title One dollars come from there. They could say, we're not gonna do this anymore. We're gonna cut it. We're gonna give this money to the state and let them decide, you know, uh, what to do with this. Uh, so, so, so talk to us about what are, what are your biggest concerns? And how do, how does it play out right here in Flint or Saginaw or whatever city you live in? How does it play out?
So it's sad that I have to say this, but we have to say this. It's not just black and brown children. It's not just children in, in Flint, in Saginaw, in our urban areas. You know, if, if people don't care about those children, there are children in Escanaba. There are children up north. There are rural areas that need, uh, what we call Title One dollars to make sure that our children can get the needed services that are underfunded. Our children have, you, we've balanced the books, uh, on the backs of our children from a state, uh, um, appropriation standpoint, a- as well as the federal government. So those children will be hurt the most. It will be, we're looking at right here in the state of Michigan, 400 million dollars that are much needed funds. The other population, uh, that, that is a huge concern to me are our special education children who get a port of 10% of our dollars from those, from the, the, uh, U.S. Department of Education. Um, you talked about, uh, loan and Pell Grants, um, also support for our educators. You know, since our existence, we've been trying, uh, the, the existence of, of public education, we have been trying to right wrongs. We have been trying to undo, uh, the, the failures of, of systems that have, uh, been discriminatory. And you talked about experiments that, that we've placed on our children, state takeovers, uh, state imposition. Flint knows that better than anyone. But whether you're talking about Flint, Benton Harbor, Detroit, um, uh, high, uh, uh, some of the other, uh, areas that have had, their Muskegon Heights that have had state takeovers that have not worked to our advantage. As a matter of fact, they've taken us in the opposite direction. We have been here in Michigan for 20 years. We were the lowest funded for schools when it, when we take into consideration. Yes. In Michigan, across the country, has been the lowest funded when you take, uh, inflation into consideration. And that was over a 20-year period from 1995 to 2015. We had, um, former governors, Governor Snyder, who, um, raided and took away, um, hundreds of dollars per pupil from schools to, to fund, uh, pet projects. So we have been taking a wrecking ball to our education system for decades. We have underfunded. And we have to know, not think, we know without a shadow of a doubt that this purposeful dismantling of our public education system is for a purpose.
Okay, so go ahead, finish.
And so taking away the funding, uh, means that you don't have, uh, teachers in the schools. You don't have, um, it, books in classrooms. You don't have, uh, the, the, the environments that children should be able to go and feel safe in their schools, um, not have to worry about rodents running around, not have to worry about having to have a coat on in the winter or, you know, in the summer, you can't get to school because it's too hot. So we've had these problems forever. So now to totally, um, wipe out and eliminate the education department um, would be devastating. And I'll just put this point on here.
Okay.
At a time when we're talking about purchasing Greenland.
Okay. So.
Ever thought it.
Or the, um, Gulf of America.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, you, you, you kind of went to something I was going to ask about, and then we're gonna get to some questions because I do see some questions from people too. Uh, but, uh, so this is what, I'm, I'm listening to the news. Okay? So they say two weeks ago, the National Report Card came out. The National Report Card said that fourth and eighth graders in 2024 uh, still performed, uh, below pre-pandemic level in 2019 in reading and math. Uh, so, so their argument is what's in place doesn't work.
Hmm, yeah. Well, it, it is so complicated. It, it, and I'm, one day I'm gonna figure out how to talk about the upstream factors
Mm-hmm.
that impact. And, and as, as a psychologist, you understand this as, as a.
Because I used to provide, uh, the, the mental health services and actually school-based health centers, which are federally funded, uh, in the schools. And so that, you know, I'm like, okay, these are federally funded programs and services. And we were there really to, uh, for, for mental health services, help supplement because the schools had depleted almost of the mental health services. You'd have a social worker that had, would run between four schools and couldn't, you know, couldn't do, uh, what really needed to be done, being spread so thinly. You'd have a psychologist there. Okay. Okay, we need this test, undo this and then go over here. Uh, so they weren't doing mental health services in a way that made sense for the whole child or the family. And so we were there to help enhance those kinds of supports and put them right there as far as physical health services. So those are federally funded programs. So does that mean that's something they could say, we don't want any more school-based health centers? You know, we want to do away with those. We want to use the money differently.
Definitely on the state level.
Mm-hmm.
So federal level, we are facing children not being able to eat. And, and, and you, you, we've traveled together where we've been in these circles, where we've heard Republicans say, we don't need to feed children in schools. So there are health programming that the federal government funds that definitely they have the opportunity to remove those dollars and have said that, that it is necessary to do that again because we're thinking about buying Greenland. But children don't need to have meals at school. Mental health programming, that is something that the Republicans would love to chop definitely here in our state. So those dollars, uh, we have been able to put forward and make sure, and, and you probably remember this summer when I was calling for the governor, calling for the legislature to make sure that we were having mental health dollars on a recurring basis, that it wasn't because we got those dollars, uh, as a result of a water crisis. We knew before there was a Flint, or I'm sorry, before there was the pandemic, we knew before the water crisis that our children needed mental health services. We knew during the water crisis for sure, and, and in Flint, we've learned that we need mental health services in our schools, but now we need to make sure we maintain those. And so those dollars on a state level, we have to continue to advocate for those dollars. And yes, they can go away. The other, uh, piece that we have to, we, let me say this, that just over the last, uh, I would say three years, we've increased what we call the Helps professions in schools by about 1,500, which is amazing. And we've been able to secure, um, the dollars on a recurring basis, not at the same level that we had a few budget cycles ago because of, we had the dollars for the ESAR funds. But yes, those dollars definitely are, uh, it's fragile at best. And we've had to advocate for them, um, over and over again. We're hearing that within our state budget, we should see those dollars, uh, be able to remain.
That would be, that would, that, yeah, we need those. I'm, I'm gonna go to some of the questions, uh, but I do want to come back to something around health.
There were two things that you said before.
Okay, go ahead.
Mary Weaver.
Uh-huh.
You are a psychologist. You know, if, if people are not hiring, then that pipeline of professionals is going to die off, right?
Oh, it goes away. Yeah.
Just because all of a sudden you get this budget that has grown by, um, by two-thirds does not mean that, uh, or I'm sorry, a third of a billion dollars does not mean that you're gonna now have the professionals, right? Cause now you gotta get.
And, and one of the things with putting them is, uh, Flint and probably Saginaw, places like that, uh, there are other places that are much more attractive to some people.
Yes.
And it was hard to get people.
And you, we were talking about reading and I want to get back to those reading scores. We definitely need to get back to those discussions. But one piece that I do want to bring up, because we're talking about budgets and we hear from our Republican counterparts that, okay, now you got the money, um, and now you should be able, we should see immediate change. We know we don't see immediate change. Uh, and I often use the analogy of somebody dropping a brick on your foot and that's what it feels like. We have just really, we have decimated, just really just dismantled our public education system, taken sledgehammers to them. And then we expect, uh, change to happen right away. And so I use the analogy of, of a brick falling on your foot. And once that brick is removed, the bones just don't automatically go back into place. There's a lot of work that has.
Come back.
To, to get that back. But, and, and then there's more to that story around our reading scores and.
Because I did, look, I, one of, one of the questions said, I want to know why, uh, our kids can't read and write in cursive. I saw that. That's a basic question. Okay, let me.
Not, it's a, it's a loaded question. It's a lot of questions. I, I have a conversation with Dr. Rice, our, uh, State Superintendent of Public Education today. I told him I was coming on the show and we were having a conversation, which you should invite him. He, he would love.
I would love to do that.
And, you know, he was like, you know, Pam, it, it's not that our children can't read. There's, there's a lot of layers and levels to that. And I'm, I'm talking broadly with the broad. So some of the things that, that we're talking about is, um, you, you talked about cursive. By and large, that's not really taught in schools. That's not something that I have, we necessarily have control over, but I, I have and will continue to advocate for legislation that pushes for cursive writing, uh, in schools. There is a legislator. Um, Brenda Jones is, is, has been pushing that legislation.
Good.
Love to see that go back into, or, or, or become, it was never mandatory, but, uh, be.
Look, it felt like it when we were in school.
Yes.
It felt like it was mandatory because it was, it was a penmanship class and you learned this. And, and it just hit me when, during campaign times, when you're getting signatures and there were people that did not know how to write in cursive. But let me get to some of these, some of these other questions too. And I see people saying, hello, I see Melissa in there. Oh, look, uh, there's Councilwoman Burns, Terrence Olsos, Sheena, A.C. There's some people in here, Rena. But okay, here's a question. This is, uh, is it that one right there? No. Okay. So Melissa said, I like to know since my son is in a self-contained classroom, because he can't be in a regular classroom. Okay. What is it you want to know, Melissa? What is your, your? Is that something that will go away? The, the sports, if you're in a self-contained, is that something that can perhaps be gone or taken with this?
Special education has not been adequately funded.
Right.
Nineteen ninety, IDEA, um, was, was signed into law. And that was under George W. Bush. That's the father, right? Yeah. George W. Bush. Well, the father.
Right.
So, um, and we are still calling for that percentage of federal dollars. So we've never got that funding. So that means that communities like Flint, who remember when we were talking about the percentage, and I don't want to rattle them off right now. It was like at least double that of the state. Uh, it was much higher than that of neighboring districts. Flint is, has a higher proportion of special education students. And if the federal government was never funding it adequately, now you have a growing percentage and rate. There was a time when even the ISD.
And we have kids that have been impacted by the water. Now, you know, we, we, we knew we were gonna have a higher rate. We had a higher rate anyway, but then that happened. And so for these things to be gone is scary to me.
On your local level, on your state level, on the federal level, because remember there was the ISD in there where the, uh, part $18 that weren't adequately being provided. And there was a pushback from the community and the Department of Education ruled that those dollars needed to be allotted where Flint got it, got, um, an allotment that was, um, equal to the proportion of students. Think about all of those spaces where at the local level, the, the state level, the federal level had not been adequately funded. So that means that you don't have all of the necessary tools. You did not have the mental, you didn't have the services, the Helps professions, the counselors, the, you know, on down the line that helps to support those schools. So now that we're finally starting to put some of these pieces together, and yes, with that 10% being as on top of the percentage, uh, for Title One that would be taken from under, um, our, taken from under our feet. Will be, that, that will be devastating to defunding our special education, uh, programming. Now, having said that, our special education system is something that we've been talking, or, or education in general, is something that we've been talking about at the State Board of Education. And so next month at our State Board of Education table, uh, we will be taking this up. Um, and writing a resolution which will, uh, support the voices of parents that we've been hearing. We will be doing more hearing sessions, but parents have been talking. Uh, we've gotten survey information and data that we can use. But we know that there's so much more to be done around special education. But we have some, some of the people around the table, a State Superintendent, um, funding that's finally coming from our legislature, from the governor, that supports what we want to do. Again, we're digging out of the hole of being defunded as a state. You get a, a pandemic, then you, you're digging yourself out of the hole again. And now you have Elon Musk and twenty-some-year-old Doge workers that are going through raiding the department and, um, trying to turn off the lights, uh, when they can. So it is a forever battle that we are com- combating uh, and fighting every day for our children and for our parents and our special education children, uh, in particular.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna.
Funded.
I'm gonna ask you these two questions because I want, I do want to make sure we have time to say, what can we do? But I have a question here, uh, Sheena, and then I'm gonna go to Rena also has. Which one is first? Uh, Rena? Okay, Rena Risper said, what is the best way for individuals, uh, that do not have children in the school system to assist?
One, one piece that has come up three times very loudly in my ear just in this week is parents and, and trying to undergird and support parents in advocating for their children. I, I, I heard a State Superintendent of Public Education say that today. I heard a former legislator parent uh, who works in the community say that. I, a principal was sitting at my, uh, dinner table, uh, the other day and saying, Pam, you know, sometimes I wish that I could get up and get on, go to the other side and help that parent advocate for their child. Because it's hard. It's a lot to maneuver. So if people have time and have the, you can do it in the right spirit to help parents to be able to, to advocate for their child, to go to bat for their child, to know how to show up at that school, show.
At those school board meetings.
Yep. Showing up at the school board meetings. And, and, and I will say, I, I will, I will be the first to say, you know, whether it's at, uh, show up knowing that these people are volunteering. Show up first with, with conversation. Think, you know, with the mindset that things can be worked out, but going to those boards of education and, um, and we know, you know, you start with the teacher, you go to the principal, you go to the superintendent and, and, and the boards of education. But don't, uh, give up advocating for your child. But don't uh, give up advocating for your child. And we have, as a community, have to listen to parents. Cause a lot of times parents just want us to listen. They want a sounding board. And it's more important, and helping them to advocate for their child.
And you know, the other thing is, I don't think you should have to have a, a child in school to be concerned about the education system in your community at all. Because one of the things we've always talked about uh, was a thriving city, a successful city needs a thriving, successful school district. Those kind of things go hand in hand. And so, and that impacts your community. And so we should be concerned about our public education system. I want to read to you, uh, Sheena said, here in South Carolina, hey, Sheena from South Carolina. We are drafting letters uh, to oppose the lawsuit that South Carolina has joined with, with uh, Texas to abolish the use of five oh four plans. We need all hands on deck for our children nationwide. What do you say to that?
I'll, I'll be going to Jackson tomorrow. No, no, not tomorrow. I'll be going to Jackson on Tuesday, Jackson, Michigan. And we're taking letters from parents, all, from school board members and parents all across the state around some of these growing and, and, and everyday issues that keep coming up and taking them to the congressperson over there. Do everything that you can. I will tell you that I think that people were ready to give up. I think we had legislate, we had lawmakers in Washington DC that were ready to just like lay down. But we've talked and, and, and the war is not over, but we've been able to win battles. We've been able to, to win battles and it, I won't say win battles, but at least keep them at bay. So yes, everything that you can do, uh, our children definitely need to um, our special education students, our special needs children, our, our children definitely need those supports like I E Ps and five oh four plans. And yes, absolutely.
You know what I'm looking, uh, Rena said, provide more ways for the media to help. Because the media can be supportive, you know, when it, when they open their mouth for the right things and give us the right information. Uh, they, they can certainly be helpful. You're absolutely right, Rena. You know, it's funny, I tuned into the State Board of Education meeting and I want, people should tune into those as well, I think. Uh, and it was interesting to me because I noticed, and I didn't get to see all of it, but one of the things that was taking place. And I said, wow, this is what we've come to. We have to vote on whether we acknowledge and celebrate Black History Month. Um, but it voted unanimously. Uh, it passed here in Genesee County, but it wasn't unanimous. Let me just say that. So I said, wow, the, the state board did better than us on that, in that. But isn't that something that we have to have votes to say, do we recognize uh, Black History Month?
But, but. Right. Well, well, can we? Can we exist? Can our history, can we talk about how we got here? Is our history American history? It, it, it's a, it is a, a, a beyond sad day. It, it really is.
I agree. And so, and I know this is gonna, this is gonna have to be a different conversation, but I want to touch on it because I still want some time for you to say, what can we do at the, at, at the local level uh, about what's going on? And, and we did talk about that some, but one of the things, when you look at what uh, takes place in the schools and the funding and the, and the services and, and programs that are funded at the federal level. Okay, so we just got a new HHS director. And health is written all into plans for uh, keeping kids, communities uh, uh, healthy and thriving uh, so they can achieve academic success. Because if you're not healthy physically, mentally, socially, you're not successful academically because those are all things that go together. So now we do have a new HHS director uh, who has some interesting thoughts. And so with health being tied so closely to uh, successful academic achievement and outcomes. I mean, what is your take on that? What do you think?
Well, let me say that at the State Board of Education, one, uh, something that I've been very proud of is that we have goals. We have strategic goals. Every, you talk about our state board meetings. At our state board meetings, we are going over those goals. We're hearing from the department. We're hearing from partners on how we're working to achieve those goals. One of those goals is set around health, which is around mental health. It's around asthma. It's about, around childhood lead poisoning. Flint, what happened in Flint, we remember and we're monitoring that. And so that.
Pull those goals up.
And though, that's a huge step. And so really that we um, something that we've known for so, yes, thank you, something that we've known for so long is that you, you cannot decouple health from academic outbreak. Now, whether we're talking about lead, uh, being a neurotoxin and, and uh, and, and impacting uh, uh, not only the um, the behavior of a child, but the, the academic performance. Whether we're talking about asthma and asthma being one of the highest causes of school absenteeism. If the child's not there, they cannot learn. Uh, and then we know and we've seen more around mental health. So the fact that when you look at, at goal number three, uh, improve health, safety and wellness of all learners, that was huge for us to begin to monitor that. Um, so yes, it's a big deal for our DHHS uh, secretary to work with us. Look how closely we work with them when we, when we were in Flint.
Right.
In, in the city government, uh, we knew that the two went hand in hand. Um, and it, it, it will be interesting at best uh, to see how someone who does not believe in some of the, just the very foundational public health uh, principles will be able to um, protect the health and, and well-being of our children. And I, and I am concerned to say the least. Um, it, 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 it is, it is concerning. It's also concerning to me that, that the, a world, what WWE World Heavyweight Champion Lady could be our secretary of, of Department of Education.
Oh, uh, McMahon.
Mm hmm.
Yes. So, oh, and so I was looking, okay, so yeah, I can't think of her first name, but McMahon. And so it was interesting because they were saying that she and Trump are very close. However, when she ran, she ran for Senate in uh, is it Connecticut, I think. And they said, when she was running for Senator in, in, for Connecticut, she had very liberal uh, you know, thoughts around education. But somewhere between running for Senate and Trump becoming president, they have closely aligned. And so that she would do whatever she can to carry out his plans. But you know, she said something that, okay, let me see, cause I wrote that down. Let me see where is it? She says something about how we're, we're giving control back to state and, and local government. Well, the state and local government have control. Uh, uh, so we're talking about the funding that supports what you control. So if the money is gone.
Did it right, yes.
You know, so, you know, I think they're confusing people when they say that, oh, well, we're giving control. No, that's where the control is, but you have the money. And you have money.
And we're going to buy Greenland.
Right. Yes, we are. And, and, and by the way, uh, Encyclopedia Britannica said they weren't changing the name to Gulf of America.
And, and, and to, to Sheena who was saying, what can, can um, media do? That is very important for us to continue to speak truth as we know it. You talked about McMahon, you talked about um, Kennedy. These are people, I, I was looking at, I had to pull up some pictures just recently because he and I uh, went to jail together in Washington DC over the XL pipeline and protest. Um, you know, he believes in, 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 in diet having a lot to do with the health and outcome of children, which that means children need to eat. So how is he getting ready to stand on truth when Donald Trump and friends don't want to feed children? And he's saying.
They'll put them in cages, but they don't want to feed them.
Right. So you know, answering a couple of questions there, when it comes to media, standing on truth, having these conversations. When I was watching CNN, NPR, no, AP got put out of um, the, the pool, um, the media pool at the White House because they wouldn't call the Gulf of Mexico, uh, the Gulf of America. And I heard one of CNN's reporters just asking and asking um, the, the press secretary the hard questions still. Someone, media has to stand up. They have to stand on truth. They have to band together even when the accurate and true news is not there. If you're.
And we have these kinds of platforms.
Exactly.
Need to bring information. So uh, you know, we've, we've got about 10 minutes left. And so you're headed in that direction. So let's keep talking because I don't want to leave people. And I know this, this will be other conversations because there's so much to cover, but I don't want to leave uh, while we just doom and gloom. What should we be doing uh, here in Flint, there in Saginaw, in Benton Harbor, in Grand, wherever you are? What is it we can be doing so we're not feeling just helpless and hopeless? How do, who do we hold accountable and, and what should we be asking, doing, looking for?
Go to your local school boards, listen. Listen to your local school boards before reacting and responding. Because one of the things that we learned and the only way that Saginaw, where I'm sitting right now, was able to fight against um, school takeover, was able to fight against charters. I saw somebody asking.
I was gonna say.
Charter transparency, definitely.
Yes, yeah.
Is because we saw what happened to Flint. And then we had people from Detroit who were coming and saying, don't do that. Because when we did that, then it opened up the floodgates and you know, we, we lost control of our education system. We have to work together. We have to look to see how the strings are being pulled from the state government and then above. And that's something that we probably will gain from this terrible time that we're in is that if we don't come together and learn from each other, we're going to be in trouble. So working with people, listening, listening to the issues that your school district is facing and then determine how other districts, not just in our state, in our state, but across the country have also been subjected to, to those same issues so that we're not siloed the way that they want us to be siloed.
Yeah. And, and, and we, we can find, we need to see what we have in common with some other groups that we can come together. I was listening to, uh, I, I don't know if it was the congressperson or the senator, uh, but in Alaska. And they were talking about, you know, being able to have schools of choice. And she said, you know, while I understand, I hear what you're saying. She said.
There wasn't, there is no choice.
What are you talking about? We got to get on a plane and, and a snowmobile and dogs and, I mean, just to try to get there and then you have.
And it's not choice when you're forced to do it. When you shut all of the schools.
Right. And there are other schools around. So you have a place like Flint. Uh, there, there's, they're closing schools all the time. Transportation is an issue. And so there are things where we have some shared challenges that we can come together on.
And let me tell you how Flint helped Saginaw. And one of our board members was just realizing this. They said, Pam, do you know that Flint has such and such a number of students in their school district? I said, yes, we would have been subjected to the same thing if we would have shut down and went to one high school.
Mm hmm.
People would not have come to that one high school in the way that they were doing it. You have to make sure you do it right and you have some, you know, you have the ability to get the children there, like you said. Because we have half the number, the population, about half the population of Flint. But we have probably doubled the number of children in our school system. But we did not, the, the charters, we were able to keep them out because we watched Flint. And when we talk about charters, no, not all charters are bad. Um, but in Michigan, Michigan has billions of dollars, taxpayer dollars that go to charters that are ran by for-profit entities that we can not track where those dollars are going. We don't know if they're going to Betsy DeVos. We don't know if they're going to uh, the, the classroom or the teachers or just to pay people who do not live here. We have dollars that go uh, to real, i- i- they have the opportunity to buy and sell real estate and make a come up off the backs of our children. There is no real transparency. We, I, I will tell you, we pushed for the transparency bills. We, we got minimal of what, what we were asking for. And I will say this, that was in a democratic trifecta. And it, it, and it's shameful that that's where we got, we were able to push to get a little, but we should have been able to account for those billions of dollars that are, that we don't know where they go to. So charter transparency, hopefully that answered um, that question uh, that, that was there as well as things that you can do is speaking up um, to your legislators at the state and the federal level. Know our government. Know that a president and him signing these executive, unfounded executive orders, they have to go through Congress. We have to push on Congress to make sure that they're not abdicating or giving away their authority. We have to do whatever we can do to make sure that our judicial system, the checks and balances of our government stand up to um, this push to take over by Donald Trump. And, and no one's going to argue that anymore. We, we know. We, we talked about Project Twenty Twenty Five. We sat here and we were like, mm, we, I think he trying to take over our country and run it as a, as, he's the, the.
King.
The king.
Yeah.
And our property.
Uh huh.
Yes, he is. And he is, uh, 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 um.
But he told us that. That's why you get.
Don't even spin.
Still wearing this vote pen. You get what you vote for or you don't.
There are roles that, that people who we elected and sent to Lansing, sent to Washington DC um, that, that we need to make sure that we stay on the phones and make sure that they do not, do not just hand over um, the keys to Donald Trump and Elon Musk so that they can go buy Greenland, so that they can kick the people out of Gaza um, and create Taj Mahal so they, you know, that they can go and try to bully Canada and back. We've got to push back. I, I will.
Yeah.
One more thing.
Right.
Is that we have to know that there are children who will go hungry in Flint. Not only because people are trying to take away their food, but when we talk about diversity, equity and inclusion, Donald Trump has used that word however he's wanted to use it. It means black people. It means brown people. It means LGBTQ people. It means just uh, us showing up at our jobs.
Listen.
So if we do not understand that we're the people who have to fight to make sure that diversity, equity and inclusion does not mean that every black person is somehow, all of a sudden, losing their uh, their means to put food on, on the table.
D E I. When I was in office, they just told me you hire too many black folk. They were real blunt and in my face. But uh, I, and we're, 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 you know, but we're gonna have to do a part two to this because there are so many uh, questions and I'm so glad that people are, you know, uh, concerned about what's going on with our education. Uh, because it's, it's, it's just so important. So, okay, I'm gonna read this and we're gonna do a quick answer because we, we got to sign off. Are there grants to help with reading programs and penmanship?
There, hire some grants and uh, I'm gonna have to give you the information.
We'll get that list.
Information.
We'll get that. We'll do a part two and come back and let Dr. Rice know. I look forward to having him on. Um.
Penmanship, there's, there's a bill that's in the house and so I'll get that to you guys as well.
Okay. And I just, I want to say thank you for coming on. Uh, this time, this hour went quick. It went very quickly. Uh, but there's a lot of information that people need to have, so we'll make sure we get this information to you. So we'll do a, another part to this and try to answer some more of these questions. I want to say thank you for coming on.
Thank you.
I appreciate it because, you know, we just need to inform and educate the community on so many levels about what we can do. Uh, and I want to remind people to go over because coming up next is Community Conversation with Steph and Carol. So you all to- tune in, find out what's happening in your community right here in the city of Flint, cause there's some stuff, y'all. Uh, Dr. Pew, uh, I will be in touch with you. We'll schedule a part two to this and I'll look forward to having Dr. Rice on. And thank you. Good luck. Uh, thank you for standing up for us at the State Board of Education and making sure our voices are heard uh, in Lansing.
And likewise, thank you for keeping the fight and, and keeping the truth out front.
That's what we do. And thank you all for tuning in and we'll see you, we'll see you real soon on Real Talk with Karen Weaver. Have a good one.